Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight our regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting, tonight, Thursday, February 17th, 2022. I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section is our additions and changes to the agenda. The only thing I would like to bring up, Gail is not feeling well, and since she is the one that's done so much work on the on the work that we will be going into executive session for, I would request that we cancel tonight's executive session, reschedule it for our next meeting, where she can present all of her facts and everything. And then we will be bringing Andy in. So does anybody have any issues with doing that?
Chairman Larson, it's Donna. I just want to confirm whether or not we have a quorum right now because there's someone dialing in, but I'm not sure if that might, if that's Mark.
Okay.
Because right now, we only have Peter and you, I believe. Caller number one, someone who just called in on the phone, could you identify yourself, please?
They left.
Yeah, I don't believe we have a quorum. I was gonna bring that up.
Okay. Okay.
Well, Natalie joined. Natalie joined.
Yes, she's not on the board.
Not on Board of Selectmen. Sorry about that.
We need quorum of our board. We will still be able, we won't be able to vote on anything. So we won't be able to do any actions. Yes.
You might, you might still get it. Let me call Mark. I'm gonna mute my, I'm gonna mute my microphone.
Okay. We'll give Andy a minute to see. Who is Jay?
Mark's gonna sign on. We might want to mute Judy until we're ready to have her with the pickles in the back. But Mark's gonna sign on momentarily.
Perfect.
If that noise is effect coming from Judy.
Okay. Do we need to do a tap dance? I was gonna say, we're gonna move to public comment. Is anyone for public comment while we're waiting for Mark to sign in? Okay, hearing, ah, we have Mark. Mark, can you hear us? Well, we're gonna, we're gonna move to Judy, then we'll go back for the changes and additions to the agenda. So I know she's got her thing going on. So Judy, please.
Yes, I just wanted to tell you that the Town Center Project Community Chorus is beginning, and we're scheduled to start on March 8th, our first rehearsal. And any of you on the board that can hold carry a tune, please join us. We have right now 25 people planned singing. Andres Stolyarov is gonna be the music director. He's selecting the music. We will have eight rehearsals there on Tuesday nights at the Senior Center from 7:00 to 9:00. And as I said, we're 25 people so far, and I'm hoping to have something short of the Mormon Tabernacle Choir, but more than 25.
Wow. Now, where's this gonna be? Are you doing additions? And if so, when are those? And where would all this be happening?
Well, the first, well, the rehearsals are taking place on eight Tuesdays, and then our first concert will be in April, on April 30th. And originally, we were planning to do it at Ram, but St. Peter's offered the use of their hall, and it holds up to 150 people. And if we have, so I figure if our first concert, we'll be happy if we get 150 people show up. And if we get more than that, and it's standing room only, then we'll go next one in the fall when we do it, we'll do another concert. We'll do that then at Ram. But that's the plan right now. But we have only 25 singers, and like I said, I'd like to have more. And I'm still hunting people. Anybody can reasonably carry a tune. You're not alone, so don't worry about it if you can't, you know, if you're not the greatest. But if you sing in the shower, you could sing in our chorus.
Okay, so that's going to be, you want to do the date and the time and location?
March 8th, it'll be at the Senior Center, and you people are welcome to come to the first two rehearsals to see if they want to join. There's no auditions. You just have to come and sing, and you have to be fully vaccinated and boosted before you can come. And it's $35 a person to come and sing, because having a free concert costs money. And so we have to buy music and stuff like that. So that's the plan. So eight rehearsals, concert on April 30th. We'll be meeting at the Senior Center now on 7:00 to 9:00 on Tuesday evenings, starting on March 8th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hope to see you all there. Bye.
We have a, we have a budget meeting, sorry. I know, that's our escape. No. I see we have Tiffany, and I think Mark is on, so we definitely do have a quorum. Going back to item number three, additions and changes to the agenda. Gail is under the weather, and so because she is not going to be able to attend our meeting, I would suggest that we postpone our executive session until our next meeting. Since she's done so much of the work, I think it'd be terrible to not have her there. So is everybody in agreement with that?
I agree.
Thank you, Tiffany. Peter, Mark?
Yes, I agree, Peter.
I agree too, Dan.
Okay, and myself. So, okay, so that'll get postponed from, until the next meeting. We've done our good to know. Our next would be appointments and resignations. And Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Item number six on the agenda, appointments and resignations, is the Housing Authority Appointment. Attached is a correspondence from John. I'm not even gonna attempt that.
It's Deautry.
Deautry, thank you, John. Expressing interest in serving on the Hebron Housing Authority.
Okay.
There's a proposed motion.
Okay. I'll read the motion, and John, if you just wanted to say something after I read the motion, it would be great. I'm assuming you're the gentleman? Okay, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint John Deautry as a member of the Hebron Housing Authority for a term to run until December 2025. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, John.
Okay, I just want to say that if you people are looking for people to do, work on some of the committees, you gotta get Florence on this, because she's very, very good at recruiting. And I had no idea this went to 2025, but, you know, I'm old enough, I think, to have some understanding of some of the things that the elderly are going through, and I worked, I did some wheels on wheels and stuff, so I'm pretty familiar with the Stone Cross and what's going on there. And hopefully, I can be of, I can be helpful and be responsive to what's going on.
Beautiful. Does anybody have any questions of, of John? No? Well, I thank you very, very much for volunteering. We need people like you to step forward. It's, you'll find it, it should be a lot of fun. You know, and I think you'll meet new people, and I think you'll have a good time on it. Hearing the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Castro, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Myself, aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. So welcome aboard. You will be getting a letter from the town clerk. So you can go in, and that letter will explain what you do to get sworn in, to get appointed down to that commission. So thank you very, very much.
I do very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, John. So next, under item 6B is Planning and Zoning Alternate Appointment. Attaches a letter from Eric Lindquist, D, expressing interest in serving as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, with a proposed motion.
Okay, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen, appoint Eric Lindquist as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to run until November 18th, 2025. Is Mr. Lindquist with us?
Yes, he is.
Good day, sir. Do you want to say anything or address the board at all?
That I've been, been in town since 2005, and as I've gotten to know our community, and it started a family here, and I've gotten more involved. And I've come to appreciate the potential we have at the town in terms of growth. Growth like in ways we can maintain and enhance the character that we've already got, the things that make Hebron, Hebron. And just other than that, I look forward to learning and learning the nuances of P and Z. And I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of, of Eric?
Mr. Chairman?
I do, Dan.
I think Tiffany was first, and then you, Mark.
Okay, go ahead, Tiffany.
I just want to, it's not a question. I just want to say that I think Eric would be a tremendous asset to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I got to know him very well on the campaign trail. He is passionate about recreation, conservation, sustainability, which I think are three important topics that are critical to the character of our town. And so I think he'd be a tremendous asset, and I'm thrilled that he stepped forward. So thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Mark?
Hey, Eric, how you doing?
Very well, Mark. How are you?
Good. I guess a couple of questions. One, how do you see your role on planning and zoning? And as a selectman and a policeman in town, and having worked at Ram many years, some of the complaints I get that planning and zoning is not receptive to what people ask or bring, that they find that they're very much turned away. I'll give you one example. Ram was trying to get a digital sign out front for various reasons, for security, for announcing games, for all the different COVID activities that have been there. And it was pretty much squashed, because they thought it ruined the character of the town of Hebron. And I don't see how safety in front of a high school, where every other high school has one, and your interest in informing the public and having an eye on safety, I don't see how that is outweighed by ruining the character. How do you feel about that?
I can see that. And as a new member, mostly what I'll be doing at first would be just to be trying to sort of wrap my head around what goes on with planning and zoning. I've taken some classes with the UConn Land Use Academy in terms of like the legal regulations and all of the nuance, the technical side of things. But I think that if the consensus in the community, like the community itself is, this is what makes Hebron. It's the people that live here. And if the consensus along, among the townspeople is to have something like a digital sign, and people are educated about why that's a benefit. You know, I'd like to work towards something like that. You know, I can, I'm not, I'm not welded to any sort of image of what Hebron is or should be, other than what the people that live here want it to be.
Oh, thank you, Eric. Good, good response. I just wanted to kind of get a gauge on how you felt and having an open mind, so it seems that you do. Thank you.
Peter?
I don't have any questions, just to comment again. I think your willingness to serve is appreciated very much. We have so many talented people in town that, you know, we can't convince to come to serve, because it is a commitment. And obviously, there's a lot that goes into it. So I, I thank you for your willingness to serve and hope it's the beginning of a long tenure of service, whether it's on this board or others as you move forward. So thank you very much for providing input into sustaining the beautiful community, which we've all committed to. So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, hearing the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Castro, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. So welcome aboard. As I say, you will also be getting a letter from the town clerk. You'll go in, get, you know, get yourself sworn in to that position, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Next, there's our town manager's report.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the town manager's report, we've been working with the airline cycles out of East Hampton and Colchester regarding the 501 Church Street property, and trying to partner with them with the Brown Steel Grant with the state. We're moving forward, myself and the town planner I met a couple of times. And we're working on the proposal to submit of a pass through, as long as he meets the requirements. So that's been sitting dormant for as long as I've been here, which is 27 years. So hopefully, we can move forward on that. We'll keep you posted, but I'm optimistic.
If I may, I just ask a question.
Yes.
Yes. I know you already said it won't be 27 years, but sort of, what's a general feeling? If everything goes well, is this a two, three-year sort of outcome? Is this a year outcome? If everything goes well, I know there's a lot of variables.
So, great question, Peter. Thank you for asking that. What I know right now is he wants to do it in two phases. There's a portion of the property that is not contaminated. He's hoping to erect something sooner than later and get in there. He's proposing a bike shop, a little bit of like a delicatessence type store, and then a pavilion with picnic tables and possibly bathrooms that will require water and other things. But I think he wants to get in there in the first phase sooner than later. So we're dealing with the state to see how fast we can move. And I'm shooting for 12 to 24 months, once the state agrees to the agreement. And working with the state, I think we all kind of know that takes a little bit of time. But the, the owner is very energized, and I think, hopefully, we, after all these years, we can turn out something that's gonna be put back in the tax rolls, and something that's gonna benefit the users of the airline trail.
Thank you.
So 12, hopefully 12 to 24 months for the first phase. Later, in this, this town manager's thing, I'll talk about water, and we're all trying to help everybody out. But as soon as we can, if, if that makes any sense.
Okay.
Okay, so next is, once again, next on the thing is we met with Connecticut Water, myself and Patrick, the town planner. And there's a lot of grants coming down the pipe. Some are low-interest loans, some are infrastructure. They're still working it out, but we're trying to be ahead of the curve and putting our, our best foot forward with shovel-ready project to extend the Amson Lake Water System up Route 85 to the center of town for multiple reasons. That bike shop would be one. The Tersha Mill will be another, and possible affordable housing, third. And then we have some stuff going on over there right behind Mac McCorson. So we're trying to enhance the supply of water. We're working with Connecticut Water to do that. And Patrick, the town planner, myself, are working on filling out some applications to try to get some grant money along with Joe Courtney's office. Also, if there's no questions on that, we're working with the state regarding the budget numbers. It was a little bit of a pull, but we finally got preliminary numbers from them, so we plugged them into our budget. So in the next week or so, we'll be proposing the town of Hebron's or the town manager's first glance at the budget to the Board of Selectmen. But we needed those numbers along with the, the grant list, so we just both got those within the last week or two. We do have a grant list that's needed for the budget prep. We got it this week, and that'll be on the March, the first meeting in March's agenda. We'll have the assessor there to go through that in detail. But I can give you some news now, without stealing her thunder, I hope. The October 1st, 2021 net grant list was 9,21,268,820, which is an increase of $1,028,047,750, or the most important thing is a 16.50% increase, more than October 1st, 2020 net grant list. So what definitely went in the right direction. The major increase is real estate portion was due to the state's mandated reevaluation, improvements to existing properties, and new residential construction. The personal property portion of the list had a decrease, mostly due to lack of purchases of the equipment of the existing accounts. The motor vehicle list increased this year is mostly due to increase in values of used vehicles due to supply and demand of COVID and the purchase of new vehicles. And lastly, the assisted living facility, Colebrook, is in their fifth and final year of the agreement with the town. For the 2021 grant list year, they will be paying 80% of the assessed value of the real estate taxes. This agreement is a five-year program. Next year, 2022, with the grant list, they will be paying 100% of their taxes. But even saying, stating that, they're still the top taxpayer when it comes to the grant list. So that's just a preview. I don't want to steal Deb's thunder. She will be at the March meeting. Okay. Spent some time working with the school superintendents on the mask mandate from the state. So the schools are gonna be coming out with their own thing, with the guidance from the state board of ed and the state health. So we really are gonna wait to see what they say about that. The governor has sunsetted that on his end on the 28th. So we're gonna leave that to the schools. I've been dealing with them, and we're gonna collaborate and make sure we come out with something that's in the best interest of everybody, doing, knowing what the numbers of the positivity rate are, are much lower than they were, you know, a month ago. The Chatham Health District, which I'm the chairman of, happy to report, we received four grants. I think I sent that out to the Board of Selectmen, totaling $500,000, which would be over the course of the next couple of years. And that's to benefit the district and in all areas, so we will enjoy the benefits of that. So it's something good to report. We had a meeting today with the District 8 Health Insurance Consortium. We're still running well on the negative, even though we didn't have our numbers readily available for today. But the entities within the health district are using a minus 4% for the budget. That includes the town of Hebron, Hebron Elementary, and Ram. So that's great, great news. Once again, we continue to do great things there. So that's pretty much all I had for the town manager's report, unless there's any questions on that.
Well, no, it's just, we're getting, so Deb is coming to us the third, but the first, we'll be having our first budget workshop, so. It'd be nice to have the other numbers first, but it's not.
We can send, we can send the numbers to you. The first of March is when I present the town manager's budget, turn over to the selectman. But that's not really a sport of selectmen's meeting. She normally comes to a selectman. If you want me to move her up to that, I can do that.
No, I, no, I mean, we'll have the numbers, then we'll have her explanation, just to help to try to keep everything in some sort of perspective. No. It does definitely sound like good news. Perfect. Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, moving on. I guess it's gonna be our, the CIP for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move on. Item eight, CIP, American Rescue Plan, State and Local Recovery Funds along. So the Capital Improvement Plan, which is attached, prescribes the Board of Selectmen review the town manager's CIP budget recommendation by February 15th, and finalize the CIP budget and five-year plan by March 1st for inclusion in the upcoming fiscal year budget attached and updated fiscal year 2022, 2023 CIP budget recommendation and proposed five-year plan. Also attached is information on recommendation projects to be funded with the American Rescue Plan, State and Local Recovery Funds. Town staff continues to work with the town attorney, the auditors, and to determine the best method to use for approval and appropriate accounting for that SLFRF projects and fundings, which is ongoing. Is appropriate at this time for the Board of Selectmen to take action on the fiscal year 2022, 2023 CIP budget and five-year plan. The SLFRF project will continue to be refined and approved at a later date. So there's a proposed motion, but what I'm trying to explain to the Board of Selectmen tonight, what you're doing tonight, or what you're going to approve, is this will still be deliberated by the Board of Selectmen during the budget process. This action approving the town manager's proposal, which is due to the policy budget to be vetted at our budget meetings with the detail and backup for all requests. So the reason this is in front of you for approval tonight is what I'm proposing to you to add into the March 1st town manager's proposal. Then it goes to the Board of Selectmen. So this doesn't finalize anything other than satisfying the policy. So I just want to make sure I was clear to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. I'll read the motion, and then we can do a discussion on that, and then we'll vote. So the motion would be, and there's no number in there, so. That would be the, the, yeah, 2853279, correct?
Yep, if you want, yep.
Well, we have to have a number in there. 2853279. And that will be, again, clarified and possibly amended as we go through the budget deliberations. I move that in accordance with the Town of Hebron Capital Improvement Plan Policy. The Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a final list of recommended projects for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 CIP budget and the five-year plan as presented totaling $2,853,279 for inclusion into the town manager's fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget recommendation. I'm just final numbers to be determined during budget deliberations. Can I throw that in or not?
It's up to you. Up to the board.
So I'll open it up to the board. What are your thoughts on this? Somebody, Tiffany?
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, with your amendment that, you know, it's, that it's subject. I mean, if we're, if I'm understanding you correctly, Andy, the purpose of approving this tonight is to appease the policy, but it does not preclude us from making changes throughout the month of March as we're preparing the final budget, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes, please. Yes, please, please, please.
Absolutely. This is a formality of the policy that we do this. But in no means does it finalize the amount or the items listed.
So I, I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't know if we need to get into an necessarily an involved discussion tonight on every line item, if this is going to be part of our budget deliberations. So if you were going to make that motion with that amendment that you added at the end, I think I would support that for purposes of future discussion in March.
Thank you. Yeah. And my reasoning for that, just as again, for clarification, literally, we have not gotten the CIP booklets with all the documentation on all the items. With, with our new way of doing the CIP, this is one of the areas that we need to kind of flesh out a little bit. Yeah, usually you get the CIP book, they go through the items, blah, blah, blah. This is kind of a little, little backwards, which is why I wanted to make sure that, that admit that, that little amendment got put in there just, just so that everybody knows really where we're coming from. Peter or Mark?
I agree with Tiffany. I agree with Tiffany. I agree with Tiffany's presentation of Andy's response to it.
I have a question if Mark, if you're set.
Yeah, I'm done, Pete.
Okay, thanks. I know I interrupted. Sometimes you have something like really like great to say, so I just sort of was waiting.
Yeah, I just, why, why, I'm just thinking about sort of the, and I know you've covered this before, Andy, but the sort of the incorporation of the American Rescue Plan components into a traditional CIP budget. We really haven't, I don't think formalized how we're, I know your recommendations, but how we're going to agree to move forward on the American Rescue Plan component. So wouldn't it be more reasonable to look at that separately? I know they, they have CIP items in it, but it, you know, we were looking for public input. We were looking and, and so I'm it just seems a little, I'm just trying to get some clarification as to why we're approving the CIP budget, which for the first time has American Rescue Plan Recovery Funds accounted for within that budget, which is not called for in our plan policy. So why wouldn't we sort of unbundle that?
So thank you, Peter. Great question. So we've never had American Rescue Funds before and we got them in June. And still it trickles down what they can or can't be used for with a lot of requests, a lot of certain things that said you can use them, you can't use them. There was changes just a month ago. So I had made it or the statement earlier, I think last month at the board of selectmen's meeting, that we're not looking to spend any of these monies till the next fiscal year. But due to the $3 million worth of requests in the capital CIP request from all the departments and talk with the town attorney and the auditor, what may be or may not be eligible, we added this in here as a possible offset. None of this approval tonight would secure any of that. Due to the change in the CIP policy, normally the CIP committee, instead of the town manager, would be presenting tonight a list of items prioritized like I am and say, this is for you guys to deliberate during the budget. So as the town manager now poised with that, that's exactly what I'm doing. So this, this will totally be vetted through the budgetary meetings. And I stated earlier, the last board of selectmen's meeting that we're not looking, even with approval from a vote from the public, we're not looking to spend any of these monies till the next fiscal year, which would be July 1. So that still gives us time, but due to the requests, as I stated, as the town manager, the only thing I've ever put in was capital requests from the departments and the schools. So there's no wish list and we're going to open that up and let entities without the town submit letters. We're going to solicitate that and see what we get. But due to the policy requirements, I had to have something prepared tonight. And I felt this was the best way to move it forward to satisfy the policy.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, is it possible, just for clarification purposes, to add something to the effect of it's also, this is, I just want some sort of notation associated with continued clarification of the utilization of the rescue plan recovery funds that could impact this. And maybe that's, Andy's described it clearly, maybe that sort of goes without needing to, you don't have to sort of overkill the amendment, but it just seems like a unique situation that it warrants some sort of recognition to that built into the, into what we're voting on. Just for clarification, or is that like overkill, Mr. Chairman, or I'll refer to Andy. That's better to get that, but get his perspective. But it just seems like we ought to have some clarification on that just from the documentation perspective. It's just, it's unique enough where it seems like there should be some notation in the motion associated with that. But if that's overkill, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there for conversation.
I don't know, because of the fact with the SLFRF funds being incorporated into the CIP projects by us making that or approving this motion with that, my, my two-word change or whatever, I think allows us as much flexibility as we could ever expect on, on both our CIP funds and the use of the SLFRF funds within that. You know, and you know, I believe we're still trying to get finalized clarifications, which we may not even have. Even as we get into the budget bit as to our all, right now, it seems like all of the things that are listed as being potentially purchased through those funds are good, are, are what will be acceptable, you know, by the entities who would be overseeing those dollars. But we all know how the government keeps, you know, flipping and flopping and changing stuff.
Yeah, maybe it's a good reason. Maybe we don't need to get into weeds. I have a lot of thoughts on how to utilize those funds, which we, I won't cover here. So I'm not anywhere close to being sort of ready to, to launch on, on, on some of these items. However, I also want to, you know, I don't want to get in the way of the, of the, just simply supporting the policy. If this is a sort of a placeholder to allow the policy to be supported, then I, I'll reserve all my other questions for a meeting at a more appropriate time, but for during the budget process. But I just, I'm uncomfortable with the blending of these two things. But if that's what we need to do and you feel we have plenty of flexibility, then I'm good, subject to the ability to sort of jump in at a later date on it.
And that's why, that's why I made those, you know, that, that two-word addition just to allow us that flexibility, that this is a placeholder. And that, you know, as we start getting into the minutia of all these different items, we may decide to change something or whatever, but at least this gives us a starting point. That, that's really all we're looking at. These are not cast in stone items. You know, they are all necessary, but we still need to, to go through the process. And this is just allowing that to start. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing the motion with, with the addendum. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Peter? Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. And our next, Andy.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Item 8C. For the viewers is COVID-19 update and mask mandate discussion. As it states, in light of Governor Lamont's recent actions regarding statewide school mask mandate, deferring the decision to the local level and steadily declining the infectious rates, it may be time to reconsider the emergency declaration in place in Hebron. The town manager will provide an update at the meeting and inform, advise for Chatham Health and the local board of education. So I'm not here to advise on the board of local education or RAM. I've been in very, very much in context throughout the week with them. They're going to come out with their own proposal and they're going to follow the guidance of the state. And as of right now, they're waiting to get that. Myself as the town manager, along with the chairman of the board, I think at tonight's meeting, we're going to move it up. Due to the low numbers, I would like to recommend that we exit or sunset the emergency declaration tonight. And, and if the board is willing, let's wait till March 3rd meeting to discuss the municipal building that I'm in charge of municipal building mask mandates. That'll be our next meeting after the 28th. We'll see what the schools are going to do. And I think it'd be more appropriate at that time. But I think for tonight's meeting, with the numbers where they are and the low hospital rates, I don't believe we need, it was like 22% infectious rate. We're down below four. So I don't think we need to stay in emergency declaration. I don't like being in that unless there's a real serious threat. And I think most people would feel the same way. So that's my recommendation to the board of select.
Okay, any discussion? Mark?
I'm in agreement, Andy. That sounds, sounds like a fair assessment of everything and not rushing, but also making a decision quickly. I agree.
Okay, anyone else? A multitask, I'm sorry. Tiffany?
Right. I agree. I mean, I think the numbers are moving in an incredibly positive direction. And you know, I would agree that the emergency declaration, I don't think is needed anymore at this time.
Peter?
Yeah, I think it's a well thought out, reasonable recommendation that he's making, and I would support that approach.
Okay, so what I did was making a motion that we sunset the emergency declaration for the town of Hebron as of 217, 2022. And that we discuss the municipal mask mandate in public buildings at our 332022 meeting to consider whether or not to maintain or eliminate the mask wearing requirements. Does that sound okay?
It does, Dan. That sounds good.
Does something make me have to repeat it?
No, don't repeat it. That was good.
Quick, I call, I call the question quick.
Okay, so all in favor, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, moving right along. Our next, again, Andy.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A Cannabis Moratorium and Potential Next Steps. Under this item attaches a letter from Natalie Wood, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting the board of selectmen, board of selectmen's option on the preferred approach for the decision on regulation or prohibition of cannabis establishments in Hebron. Also attached is a presentation prepared by the town planner, town planner Patrick Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher and Ms. Wood will be in attendance to provide information and discuss with the selectmen. So before we turn it over to them, I've had conversations with the town planner, Patrick, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn for Ms. Wood. But what you have in your packet, and I, I, I believe everybody's seen this or I've had access to it, is what they're looking for is, for the board of selectmen is to either decide whether you want to vote on option one. And option one would seal the deal. Option two or three would be a zoning ruling or vote. And you would, if you didn't want to propose option one and you chose to pass over to planning and zoning, they would decide on option two or three. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and hopefully I didn't lead anybody astray. So Patrick, I'll give it to you and then invite Natalie in whenever you feel appropriate.
All right. Great, thank you. Pat Gallagher, town planner, and I'll give a brief presentation just to provide some background. I know this was in your packet, but just want to kind of set the stage for our discussion a little bit later. Go back in my, actually this little bar here, so we can see. So back in June of 2021, the state passed a bill legalizing adult use cannabis. And the bill had a lot of questions that were unanswered for municipalities. And in response to that, the town of Hebron, like many municipalities in Connecticut, passed a temporary and limited moratorium on cannabis establishments to wait for additional state guidance and also get time to study the issue in greater detail. That moratorium currently lasts until May 30th. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated a process that looks to extend that through December 30th. And there'll be a public hearing on that application at their March 8, 2022 meeting. And since the moratorium was passed, the State Department of Consumer Protection did issue a policies and procedure document, which answers a lot of the questions that the initial state legislation left unanswered. So just go through some of the kind of key mechanics of the, the state bill. Probably the most important term is cannabis establishment, and that's what their whole licensing process is based off of. So there are 11 types of cannabis establishments that are discussed in the state bill. Each of those establishments is a license type that the state will issue. And the state is regulating all aspects of cannabis industry from cultivation through production of products, transportation and sales. So each step of the cannabis industry will be regulated by the state. And these are just the definitions. I won't go into these in great detail. But just to give a brief overview, we have two establishments that are, produce or sell medicinal cannabis. We have licenses that will be issued for establishments that grow cannabis. And the cultivator and micro cultivator are growers of recreational cannabis. We have licenses for sale of cannabis and we have both establishments that would sell recreational as well as a combination of recreational and medicinal. And then the last group are businesses that would either produce, package, transport or deliver cannabis between a grower and a retailer or from a grower to a consumer. And it's important to note that the regulatory process is, is regulating the businesses that are located within a community. So while the town can't prohibit the use of cannabis by private residents, it can control the cannabis businesses that locate within its borders. So in order for the state to issue a license to any cannabis establishment, that establishment needs to have local zoning approval, which underscores the need for us to have regulations. The state bill also has a cap on the number of approvals that we can grant for retailers and micro cultivators through July 1st, 2024, where we're limited to one of each. That may be increased by the State Department of Consumer Protection once we hit that date. The state bill also outlines how municipalities can regulate cannabis establishments. And municipalities can prohibit either all or some cannabis establishments from locating within their borders. There's additional restrictions on signage and there's also provisions allowing towns to restrict the proximity of these businesses to sensitive uses such as schools. There's additional signage and advertising regulations for cannabis that don't apply to other businesses. And these are really meant to prevent these businesses from targeting ads or signage towards users under the age of 21 or claiming any curative or therapeutic benefits or using specific words such as pharmacies. So the state bill does allow us some additional oversight in terms of regulating signs and advertising that we don't have for other business types. So when thinking about potential regulatory approaches, I found it helpful to kind of group the different cannabis establishments together based on types of uses with similar considerations. So we have our cultivation type uses, you know, these are the businesses that grow cannabis. We have our manufacturing type uses, which would produce products or package products to be distributed to retailers. The retail uses would sell products to consumers. And then transportation and delivery uses would move products between different establishments or in the case of delivery service, between a cultivator or manufacturer and a consumer. So there is an obligation for municipalities to regulate cannabis either through zoning or their ordinances. Because if we don't have zoning or ordinances, then cannabis establishments would be regulated just like similar uses. So for example, if we had, if we did not have regulations in place and a cannabis retailer were to locate in Hebron, they would be treated just like a retail store. And the same would apply to other types of cannabis establishments as well. So for the retail example, they could presumably locate, apply for a special permit or site plan approval in any of our business districts. So again, this underscores the importance of the town establishing regulations. I also wanted to just kind of briefly go over case studies for some of the cannabis businesses that exist already in Connecticut. And these are primarily for medical cannabis. Recreational cannabis licenses have not yet been issued, although some towns have proactively adopted regulations. So for cultivation type uses, the state has explicitly stated that cultivation is not an agricultural use. And due to the security requirements, the cultivation that occurs within the state today occurs within secure indoor facilities. And these are commonly found in industrial parks or business parks. You need large facilities for many of the license types. And the very strict security requirements really mean you have to be able to secure the perimeter and really control who goes in and out of the site. And Hebron lacks the industrial park space that some towns in Connecticut have that have these types of uses. Similarly, medical retail cannabis sales are allowed in Connecticut. And some municipalities have established regulations. Some towns have proactively also changed their zoning to allow recreational sales as well. And retail sales really run the full gamut. Some towns prohibit it altogether. Some towns permit only medical sales. Other towns permit all types of sales. But one thing that all of these regulations have in common is that they all contain separation restrictions. So that means is that it prevents cannabis business from locating close proximity to schools or other sensitive uses. And so in the case of Hebron, where our main business district in Hebron Center, we have a high concentration of sensitive uses that may effectively zone out any potential cannabis retail uses, even if we did choose to promote them. Another consideration is potential tax benefits. So the state law allows municipalities to receive 3% municipal sales tax on the gross receipts of all recreational cannabis sold by cannabis retailers, hybrid retailers, or micro cultivators who are within their borders. However, this money must be spent on six specific purposes that are outlined here. And they're really focused on either streetscape or infrastructure improvements in the neighborhoods where the establishments are located or various youth education, mental health, civic or addiction type services. So I was asked by the, one of my commission members of, you know, what would that be in Hebron? And that's, that's hard to say, just due to the lack of data in Connecticut. But I did put together a hypothetical exercise based on data from Massachusetts from 2021. In Massachusetts, the per capita sales for recreational cannabis was just under $190 per capita. This may be on the high end of the estimate because many of the states around Massachusetts don't have legalized recreational cannabis. So Massachusetts capturing some of those at state consumers. But nevertheless, I think serves as a useful benchmark. So hypothetically, if Connecticut has the same per capita sales as Massachusetts and Hebron were to capture all of its local demand, there would be about $1.7 million in local demand annually. And 3% of that would be just under $52,000 per year, which again would have to be spent on those specific programs outlined in the state law. Other considerations are impacts to town services. The state law does allow municipalities to charge for town services like traffic or other public safety costs during the first 30 days after opening with a limit of $50,000. After 30 days, the municipalities are not allowed to charge a cannabis establishment for any costs that the town may incur. And this is somewhat of a different approach than Massachusetts, where local host agreements are allowed, which allow the town to recoup some more of those costs. Those are not allowed in Connecticut. And so we only have the ability to recoup costs during those first 30 days. So as we've had conversations with the Planning and Zoning Commission, they really wanted to take a step back before moving forward and talk through the regulatory approaches with the Board of Selectmen. And this kind of summarizes the different approaches that the town can take. The most restrictive being a prohibition of cannabis. And that can be done either by the Board of Selectmen through an ordinance or if delegated to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the prohibition could also be through the zoning ordinances. And so that's a discussion tonight is the approach that the board wants to take. Should the Board of Selectmen delegate this to the Planning and Zoning Commission? In addition to prohibition, the commission could also look at ways of regulating these uses ranging from a somewhat restrictive approach, which would perhaps permit some and other types of cannabis licenses to the least restricted, at least restrictive, which would permit but regulate all types. Should we prohibit cannabis through zoning or ordinance? There is still, there's a provision in the law that allows this to become a ballot measure upon the petition of at least 10% of the electors. So as Andy had mentioned earlier, the commission really seeks the board's guidance and wants to make sure that we're on the same page before proceeding with any regulatory changes to the zoning. And as Andy had alluded to, the two options for discussion tonight are option one, does the Board of Selectmen wish to establish an ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments? Obviously, that doesn't need to be done tonight, merely just looking for direction. Or option two or three, the Board of Selectmen would delegate this decision to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who would do one of the following, either prohibit cannabis through the zoning regulations or choose to permit all or certain types of cannabis establishments and establish restrictions to permitted and prohibited zones, hours of operation, signage, and proximity to those sensitive uses that I mentioned before. And that ends the slide. I don't know, Natalie, if you have anything to add?
Not really. I thought it's, this is a, it's a very good comprehensive view of, of basically the, the regulation that's facing the town. And what are the next steps that could be taken by the Board of Selectmen or continue with the Planning and Zoning Commission? So we did take, as Patrick mentioned, the step, the step back because if this were something that the Board of Selectmen wished to proceed forward with, certainly can, but we just didn't want a duplication of effort.
Good. Thank you. Mark?
Yes. I think the most ludicrous thing that I heard in that whole presentation was that we have to sell drugs to develop 3% to help fight people taking drugs and develop programs. That is ludicrous. I can't support that whatsoever. As somebody who's dealt with drug use, drug prevention, thousands and thousands of young people ruining their lives over drugs and struggling, I think right, right off the bat statutory level with the Board of Selectmen, I don't want any marijuana in this town. That's not a good image for us to create. And if you think that because you're going to regulate young people not getting it by having a law, that's also ludicrous, never proven to be true. And young people always find ways to get it. They'll have straw purchases through 21 and 22 years old. Right, right. Just last night, I had three crying parents to me whose kids all started on vaping and got immensely addicted to that and then started smoking marijuana every day. And this is what, this is what parents struggle with. And to bring any more incentive into this town, and it's just, it's making money in a dirty way. And I can't support that one iota.
Thank you. I have, I have questions, but I'm not sure who they would go to. I've been, somehow I, I was informed that they, they basically, it's a cash business. Some of my fears are many times we have maybe, maybe one police officer on duty. I'm looking at these kinds of facilities and the people who may want to get these types of products not necessarily being the most upright citizens. And I just have a terrible fear, especially with, you know, amount of police protection that we many times have in town. To me, I think it would be ripe for, for somebody to say, you know, I'm going to hit it dispensary. I don't know. These are kind of feel fears that are in my mind. I, I just, I, I'm just very leery, leery with this coming into Hebron. And, you know, if it's not in the center, you have it like in Amston Village or something, you know, why not put it out in the end of a dead end road where there's no, no protection? I don't know. Maybe it's just me. I don't know. Anybody else, please?
That's a good point, Dan. It's inevitable. Look at all the little marts that we've have crashed into, doors broken down, pulled off with chains by cars just to get cigarettes. So now you have the ante in terms of profit for what you're selling of your stolen goods and the greater demand for that. You're only inviting that. And you'd be so naive to think that that's not going to happen. And we are a small community. And you're right, we have one guy here. Sometimes we have two. But we don't have the resources to even do drug enforcement enough to support the parents who want to quell the opportunity here that their kids have to buy drugs. So I can't see any wins to this whatsoever.
Tiffany, I see your mic is on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think this is obviously a topic that a lot of people have very strong opinions on. And so I appreciate the discussion. I supported this bill when it went through the legislature. I see the legalization of the sale of marijuana is not just, frankly, an economic opportunity because Massachusetts has been doing it for about five or six years. But I also saw it as an important equity and criminal justice system issue as well. And so I supported the legislation on a statewide level. I think too, I think that Mark's lived experiences are incredibly important to the conversation because they are his and they're valuable. I would like to point out that researchers are mixed on whether marijuana is actually a gateway drug. There's evidence that shows it is. There's evidence that shows it isn't. There's evidence that shows you're no more likely to graduate to harder drugs using marijuana as you would alcohol. I also think it's important to note that I've been reading about what's been going on in Massachusetts. And there are a lot of towns in Massachusetts in overall that have not seen an increase in crime. And so I thought that that was very interesting to read. You know, 51,000 might not be a ton of money, especially if it's restricted. But with tight budgets that we work with, that could make a difference for types of youth programs. So, and I would also point out that actually, the town of Andover is aggressively recruiting these types of businesses and they're right next door. So all this to say that I don't know that I could support prohibiting all of these outright as a Board of Selectmen initiative. I think I'd probably defer to planning and zoning to see how that might work. Certainly, it sounds like from the presentation, there's only so many spaces they could go anyway based on how our town is laid out. But I just think it's important to put different, you know, to put some more information out there. So it's a well-rounded discussion. So thank you. This has been great.
Peter?
Thank you. I appreciate that as well. I, I, a couple of things. I sort of look at it from a few different perspectives. One is sort of alignment with federal regulations, which to your point, Dan, is why it's federally not legal yet, which is why you have a cash and a banking issue and some challenges there. So there's no question there's, there's not a correlation between state and federal right now overall. So that is a challenge that I think, you know, might include me, or it gets me thinking that we need to be a sort of, I'll unplug on this. I think that there, from a cost benefit analysis, as I look at it, I understand what Tiffany's saying regarding the budget. But the benefit and the restrictions of the money would not seem to, at least initially, outweigh the potential downside of it, even though some of that is anecdotal, we're not sure. But there's a risk and the upside in terms of the revenue relative to the potential downside early on the process is something that would cause me to pause. And so I, I would support a continuation of the, of a moratorium as we continue to have dialogue and, or create an ordinance. Ordinance is fine against the pressure of a planning, wanting. I would support an ordinance because clearly we can change the ordinance as more information develops, as the conversation continues. So, but I, I'm not, I'm right now not in support of, of changing the zoning to allow these businesses to come in. And I did want to make a note, before I forget, Patrick, I appreciate the time that you took to put this together because you did it in a, in a very comprehensive and concise manner, which I think is great for the public to see. It allows, it's good communication, it's clear, it's comprehensive. And I think you did good work there to provide good information for us to react to. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy, I know you have your hand up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen. So I'm just here to give you my professional opinion on what's in front of you tonight. I'm not weighing in on the topic of the subject. So if you could refer to the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning's letter, Natalie, what's being asked of the Board of Selectmen tonight is, one, if the Board of Selectmen feels strongly to apply an ordinance that would prohibit, if I can use layman terms, like vinyl is final, that, that, that is the heavy hand. The other option is the Board of Selectmen vote to put it back into the Planning and Zonings approvals or authority. And they would look at option two or three. They just, before they went any further, wanted to know what the Board of Selectmen's thinking or their blessing. I'm not trying to steer you in, in any way. I think the Planning and Zoning is, commission has always worked in the best interest of the town of Hebron. And there's very little area that this would fit into the regulations. So without getting into the topic itself, the question in front of the Board of Selectmen tonight is if you want to just cancel this out and you want to make an ordinance, and ordinance is kind of like vinyl is final. Zoning regulations can be put in place and do the same thing, but will be easily or easily amended down the road if regulations or something get changed, will make this more advantageous for the town. And Natalie, if I'm speaking out of turn, or Patrick, you can help me there. But I think that's my understanding of what's being asked tonight.
No, you're exactly right, Andy. I wanted to make sure that that was, came around to that, and to that letter because it did focus pretty clearly on the ask.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Natalie a question?
Yes, please.
Hi, Natalie.
Are you able, and maybe this is not appropriate, are you able to?
Are, are you able, and maybe this is not appropriate, are you able to articulate a preference? You've asked the question, but are you able to articulate a preference as a board or is that, would that not be appropriate?
Well, the board can take the action just as you have here in the, in the zoning regulations can be done as either completely to prohibit it or to uh, allow it in certain areas under certain conditions. And that's all how the regulations work.
But would you, would you prefer that the Board of Selectmen take action or does that not? I'm just, I'm just wondering, or maybe you can't comment on that. Would you rather have us take action? Um, or would you rather control it from the zoning perspective?
I think it's, it's up to the Board of Selectmen how they wish to do it. If you do it, as Andy said, if it's done by zoning regulation, if there's any kind of a change of mind down the road, down the line, it is possible to do that with the regulation. On the other hand, if you do it by an ordinance and you decide to change your mind, you can repeal the ordinance that, you know, that can happen as well. I don't know the procedural stand, standards that you'd have to do to do that. Um, with the zoning regulations, if it was a, a certain path was taken using the regulations, if there was uh, discontent with parts of it, those can be changed and revisited.
So if I could stay on this for a second and go back to, to Dan, uh, to, to Mr. Chairman, do you repealing an ordinance? So I haven't been here long enough to have repealed an ordinance. So is that a process that is not difficult or is that sort of unprecedented? Or, you know, do we put ourselves in a box um, by creating an ordinance and then a year later deciding to repeal that ordinance?
Uh, you're asking the very question that I was asking in my mind that I needed input from somebody far smarter than I. I don't, I just don't know. Um, I am not even sure if I ever remember a time that we repealed an ordinance. So this would be something I'd have to ask Andy and he may need to get legal opinion, you know. The, the question, Andy, uh, that Peter is, is putting forth is if an ordinance is enacted, what is the process to repeal that ordinance?
I don't, I'm not prepared to answer that to its integrity tonight. I would ask the town uh, town attorney, but as I stated earlier, there's an ordinance is more of a once you do an ordinance, it's pretty much designated as that's the law of the land. Where if you give it to the zoning, they could still do the same thing. But if things were to change at the state or federal level, they could amend or at some point, you know, make it beneficial if it was in the town's best interest. So I can't really give you a straight answer without talking to the town attorney on that, but I just know an ordinance is a lot more carved in stone versus putting in a zoning regulations that could be amended.
But since we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, let's figure that out because um, in municipalities, you could have an ordinance for um curfew and amend it. If you have the ability to create an ordinance, ordinance, you have the ability to amend it and get rid of it. But let, let Andy find some legality on that. I want, I want to make another statement based on listening to everything. I, I am for the decriminalization of marijuana and I'll give you an example. If you're 18 years and older and you, you possess a small amount of marijuana, all you get is a ticket and a fine. But you can't do that with minors 14 to 18 or 16 to 18. You have to arrest them and that's punitive because kids are going to make mistakes. And we try to find diversionary programs for them, but those are things should, that should be done. Not, not putting, and I know they're kind of two separate issues, but we work on the wrong things sometimes. So, and then if you give them a ticket for having marijuana as a 16-year-old, then it puts like a moratorium on their license and they can't drive for a while or can't get a license or take the test within six months. So those are ways of controlling those things that have consequences. But actually having retail stores that sell marijuana in Hebron, I, I cannot see the benefit to that whatsoever to the community as a whole, to young people, to the society here. I just, I just can't. I'm, I'm for an ordinance. I'm not for turning it over to planning and zoning. I'm for an ordinance uh, to, to not have that right now. If in light of new things, if we decide to change that and you can convince certain people's minds, um, and I think it is some benefit somewhere, but you cannot articulate that that is an all encompassing uh, um, decision that is really going to benefit a lot of people. It's not going to benefit most people and I'm completely against it.
So do we have, if I may, Mr. Chairman, do we have time to get that clarification? Uh, or are we looking, or Natalie, are you needing us to make a decision?
Well, I think that from our standpoint and Patrick, uh, you can tell me if I'm, uh, I'm wrong on this one. But right now we, we were extending our uh, moratorium so that it goes till December 30th. So there is time to be able to, um, what's it called, either amend regu- zoning regulations or to put a, a ordinance in, whichever you choose. Um, I wouldn't wait too long because we still, we, if there, if the, it comes down to the zoning regulations, we still have to just work with them and, 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 and get that to, to happen. So.
Dan Larson, I think, I, I think we would all feel a little better if we knew uh, the ins and outs of establishing an ordinance, what would be required if we were to change our minds. Because as I say, I've never heard of an ordinance being repealed in Hebron. So if, if there is any discussion about possibly doing an ordinance and then, you know, doing away with it as time goes on or as more facts come out, I think we better make sure what that procedure is. Uh, if we have the time, that, that's, should be a simple phone call to the attorney who should be able to tell us what and how ordinances are established and uh, deactivated. If that's not probably the right word, but.
That's reasonable. That's reasonable, Dan.
Uh, Peter?
Yeah, it feel, it just feels like it's a, an item that the board, regardless of what the ordinance says, because clearly there's that, that's for another day, but it feels like a, an item the Board of Selectmen should ta- take on um, to represent the town more so than throwing it back to planning and zoning. It seems like in this case, because it's such a um, a, a sort of a broad-based issue and a societal issue and, and it's new, it seems like we should establish the track that the town is going to go on and then zoning and the zoning, but the planning and zoning then sort of tactically applies that direction rather than, it just doesn't feel like a toss it back over the it does feel like the Board of Selectmen should be weighing on, in on this. Uh, regardless of what direction we go in, it seems like we should be providing a, a perspective on it, whether it's through an ordinance or whatever it is. But I just, I don't feel comfortable saying to Natalie, hey, you, you guys deal with it. It just doesn't seem, it seems like we should have a, a position on it. So I'm willing to wait if we get more information so we can continue the dialogue, uh, if we can do that.
Uh, Tiffany?
Yes, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable waiting to, to hear, you know, the process of an ordinance because I think you're right. I mean, when I was covering local government back when I was a reporter, I don't recall many ordinances being repealed, to be quite honest with you. I can think of one off the top of my head in five years. So I think it would be very helpful to know that process so we can continue the conversation with more information.
Okay, uh, Andy?
So hearing in light of what the discussion was, I'll ask the town attorney for two things. One, um, the pros and cons of turning this decision over to planning and zoning. And two, what it would take to um, appeal an ordinance. And I'll have that in writing for the, uh, hopefully the next Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Perfect. It'd be basically establish an ordinance and to do away with an ordinance.
Right.
Sure if those are the proper words.
Or modify, right? Right, Dan? I mean, we can modify. I mean, it's more, it's Tiffany's point, it's more information. We start one place and we work on the ordinance side versus simply relying on planning and zoning to take the burden of the issue.
Yeah, oh no, this is definitely something that we have to take, you know, bear some responsibility for shouldering this. So.
Right. Because the, the state modifies ordinances all the time. We get a new penal code book every year and they modify ordinances all the time. I don't know what, why it's going to be such a big deal if you're the creator of the ordinance. And they repeal things, alter things, change things, add things. And if it's something that's disimportant, we ought to exercise our authority to do this, which is best for the community.
Uh, Patrick or Natalie, anything to add or?
The, this feedback's been helpful. And then like I said, with the extension of the moratorium, we do have a little bit of time. Um, so we, we certainly appreciate the input tonight and I'll keep working with Andy um, on, on next steps.
Okay.
Exactly. I, I agree fully. We'll be in touch with Andy and see what, what your outcome is. Thank you.
Okay, Andy?
Yeah, I just want to thank Natalie and the Planning and Zoning Board to point this out to the Board of Selectmen and give us this option for this debate. Um, we'll move forward with the pertinent information and we'll bring it back to everybody involved. So good debate and uh, they were looking to uh, see what the Board of Selectmen's position was on this. And I think some more information needs to uh, be gathered before we can make a final decision. So it was a good debate.
Yeah, uh, one last question for probably Patrick. Have, have, has there been any interest in bringing anything in to Hebron at this time?
I have not had any inquiries at my office. Um, the state is actually, they have their licensing lottery open right now, the first round of, of licenses. Um, and so I think the first businesses will be reaching out to municipalities at some point in the next few, few uh, few months, but uh, none have reached out in Hebron.
Okay, so good. That's good. Okay, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, our next thing would be the conservation easement. Andy?
Yes, thank you. Item 9B on the agenda, accept conservation easement Blackledge West subdivision. Patrick has stayed on here um, for this item as well. So attached is a memo from the town planner, Patrick Gallagher, regarding a conservation easement for the Board of Select, Board of Selectmen's acceptance before being filed on the land records. Mr. Gallagher will be president, present, which you know, and there's a proposed motion. So without, Patrick, explain exactly uh, what this is.
Andy, Pat Gallagher, town planner. So as part of the town's subdivision regulations, um, each time land is subdivided, applicants are required to set aside a certain percentage of land as open space or pay a fee in lieu. And so this is a three lot subdivision that was approved on West Street, uh, right next to the uh, golf practice facility uh, operated by Blackledge Country Club. And as part of that, um, there were two conservation easements that were part of that approval. One is the, runs along the first 25 feet of the road. And this is a common, um, common type of easement that the commission requires that helps preserve the rural characteristics of the road. And then a second easement uh, in the rear of one of the lots around a wetland. And conservation easements basically uh, preserve the land as open space, uh, but the land does remain in private hands and there is no public access. But it does help meet our open space goals by keeping that land in a natural state.
Okay. Now, with, on the property setbacks, does the, does the setback for the house lot begin after that easement property?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is that something that's been done routinely over years or is that something new?
So it has been done over the years. Um, there hasn't actually been a lot of subdivision activity in Hebron uh, over the last 15 years. There was a lot uh, before the Great Recession, but since then, uh, it's been primarily, you know, one, two lot subdivisions. Um, so this isn't something that's come before you very often, probably over the last 10 years. Um, but these types of roadside conservation easements have been used elsewhere on West Street. I believe there's also one on Millstream Road and they've been used on some other subdivisions as well.
Okay, and who's been responsible for the trees and things like that along that strip?
So there's a conservation easement agreement that uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission developed um, a few years ago. That's our standard document. Um, it basically becomes the responsibility of the property owner to maintain um, the easement in its natural state, although they do have the ability to, for example, cut dead trees, move invasive species and the like, but that's all the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay.
Dan, I have a, I, of my eight acres, I have four of them in conservation.
Okay.
Off of Route Lane, there's a conservation easement all over. And it's some good things about it and obviously for me, there's some bad things about it because I can't use it or put my house wherever I want to. But I, I really see the benefit of it, of keeping a, a road rural with trees along the road and then the house is setback more. That, that seems to be a, a good purpose and use of it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Andy?
So uh, Chairman Larson and the Board of Selectmen, so just for point of reference, Jack Hooker also has a subdivision on the other end of West Street. He has a conservation easement similar to this.
Okay.
When he put that in several years ago, so it's not uncommon to the road.
No, as I say, I just, I kind of looked at it. It was just something new. Okay, well, I'll make the motion and we can continue discussion or we'll vote. Uh, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen, accept the conservation easement for Blackledge West subdivision shown and designated on a certain map entitled record subdivision map prepared for Blackledge LLC, 231 West Street, Hebron, Connecticut, scale one inch equals 40 feet, date 8/1921, uh, 1921. Or 2021, rather, prepared by Tarbell, Hines and Associates Incorporated, Civil Engineers, Land Surveyors, 1227 Burnside Avenue, East Hartford, Connecticut, 860-528-1810, job number 61 dash west scale as shown revised 10/1921, uh, drawn by M L T sheet number two. So any other comments or con- the conversation? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. And thank you, Patrick.
Welcome.
Okay, um, is there any other new business that come before us? We have the draft agenda for the uh, March 3rd, 2022 meeting. Again, anybody changes, alterations, whatever, get it into the town staff. Hearing none, we have the consent agenda items, which at this point is the approval of the uh, February 3rd, 2022 regular meeting minutes. And then the tax refunds as listed. So does anybody have any comments or corrections, additions or deletions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. Uh, and again, it would be the approval of the minutes of February 3rd, 2022, the regular meeting and the tax refunds as noted. Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Uh, next would be our liaison reports. Uh, we'll go the other way. Tiffany first.
Oh, me first. Okay, well, I'll be.
Oh, me first. Okay, well, I'll be quick. Um, the um, the boards of which I'm a liaison on did not actually meet in the timeframe since our last meeting, but I do have a clarification regarding Earth Day. There will be a townwide cleanup that the Green Committee will organize, and they'll also open the swap shack that day. So I wanted to get that information back to you. Other than that, pretty quiet on my end. Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
I'll go, I'll do Ram first. Um, actually, my wife Jessica's in the other room at a Ram board meeting. And it's the final meeting for selection of a superintendent for Ram. And they've been working on the budget almost every day. And they started working with A H M again, and it's exciting and. They do a lot of good work and I'm glad that we're all in favor and supporting them, Andy, everybody. We uh. As they're they're a gem in our community, so I'm glad to be on board with that and can can tell you that they're doing well and always expanding programs. So that's it for me, guys.
Okay, I'll go over the end. Andy, you have anything for liaison?
I don't. I I sent out the update from the sewer project after the last meeting. I haven't gotten a new one yet. So I do not.
Chairman Larson.
Okay, Peter?
I'm a liaison on did not meet since our last meeting, so.
And myself, uh, Hebron Historic Properties met the same night as we had the town meeting. So glad to know that we ended up with more than enough people to to have the town meeting. I thought that was great. And happy with the results. Uh, there was some good comments and good, good dialogue. We do need to, I guess, better state sometimes some of what we're doing. Because there were questions that. People had, which thankfully were able to get answered satisfactorily. Uh, but on that, I have nothing else. So. We do not have an executive executive session tonight. I'll open it up if we have any outside public comment. And I don't hear of any public comment, so.
Do you mind if I just ask Andy a question?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Anything on this, I just was the wind and the storm. Is there any concern or are we getting any issues that we're sort of preparing for something? Relative to these high winds that or are they not at a level that they're predicted to be? I just was thinking about that from a storm perspective in the town. I know it wasn't on the agenda. This was curious.
No, under public comments, a great question. I kind of forwarded an email from the state emergency to everybody. I don't get a chance to see it. So we're expecting fifty. Forty five to fifty five mile an hour winds, depending on where you are, sometimes a little bit higher. From midnight tonight, I guess is the worst until about eight o'clock tomorrow morning. So. The town's on high alert. I notified our emergency management director along with our police and fire, Public Works, of course, and we're prepared. So. Be prepared for possible power outages, trees down, things of that nature, because anything. With that type of magnitude or that kind of wind speed, you can almost guarantee power outages. So we'll be monitoring that. I probably anticipate. If we have a large amount of power outages, I'll be in the office earlier than normal. And try to work with the emergency crews to make sure that we get power restored the best we can.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Please stay safe. Have a great weekend. Enjoy the warmth tomorrow. And it's going to get cold again. But next week's supposed to be nice, so we'll we'll go for it.
You want me to be gay when I move to adjourn?
Yes, please.
What what time is it? It's uh, eight thirty four. I moved to join at eight thirty four.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.